Welcome, everyone, and we'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order. This evening, we will first be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner, then Commissioner Kaplan will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Let's pray. Father, it is good to be here again this evening, Lord, and again, we are grateful for this opportunity to be able to represent our constituents in a wonderful county here in Rutherford in Tennessee. Father, we just think about some of the challenges that we've seen across our country lately, Lord. We mourn the loss of those 50 innocent victims in Orlando through a crime of hate, Lord, that's purely a heart issue. And it's just one of those things where sometimes evil comes out in actions, Father, and we just weep for those families, and I just ask that you continue to put your arm of peace and protection around those families as they grieve, and do the same for us as a country and as a county, Lord. We need your guidance right now, and we are turning to you, and we're asking, Lord, that you forgive us for things that we have done that are offensive, and that you just allow us to love one another and honor you through our actions and the way we treat our neighbor and our brothers and sisters. And tonight, give us guidance as we do our best to handle the county business, allow us to be able to speak in words that honor you and honors our community and those who we serve, and allow us to speak clearly and speak passionately, but also speak respectfully as we handle the business tonight that's been laid before us. Father, and I ask all these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Here.
Commissioner Piercey.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
President.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
President.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Sereno.
Here.
We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you very much. All right, you have received a copy of the minutes, and we'll call on Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them in order and move that they be approved.
And a second from Commissioner Cook and others. Did anyone else have any corrections or additions that they found? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a resolution of honor for Marine Captain Jeff Kous, and we're going to allow Commissioner Stevens, Allen, and Turner to come up here and honor him with this resolution.
Two weeks ago in Smyrna, we had a tragedy, and we're all very familiar with the pilot of the Blue Angels plane number six that crashed in Smyrna. And we wanted to recognize him for his service tonight and recognize all those in the community that helped with that tragedy. So my distinguished colleague, Commissioner Allen, will be recognizing the first responders that came and helped with that situation, and then our distinguished colleague, Brad Turner, will also talk about how the community came together in Smyrna and rallied behind supporting that family and supporting each other, and then I'll read a resolution in honor of Captain Kous.
The Blue Angels Elite Demonstration Team thrills and captivates the citizens of Smyrna each time they arrive in our town. They are met by spectators who fled outdoors to see them. We stop our cars on the side of the road just to catch a glimpse of the Angels speeding by so quickly that the aircraft passes before the sound. Smyrna is in awe and amazement regardless of how many times we've seen them before. We are all like children seeing them for the first time. At the age of six, I will never forget the thrill of hearing that incomparable roar the first time as you see that magnificent aircraft being flown so low that not only can you read the words at the bottom of it, you feel like you could touch it. From that point on, you're just hooked. You feel the roar in your chest, you feel the ground shake beneath you, there's nothing that compares. In Smyrna, we all look forward to Thursday and Friday practice sessions. On these two days, we have the show all to ourselves. We will never know the names of most of the pilots who bring us such joy, but we will never forget the name of Captain Jeff Kous, who died a hero protecting us all. There are many other heroes that day and the days that followed that need to be thanked as well. The following is a list of town leaders and first responders who swiftly moved into action when Marine Captain Jeff Kous, Blue Angel number six, crashed his F/A-18 Hornet in Smyrna on June 2 at 3:01 PM. First, I have to acknowledge our town manager, Harry Gill, Smyrna Airport Authority Executive Director John Black. There is no training for an event like this, just true leadership shows up, and I have to tell you, they did that, and they did a great job managing just a critical situation. The Smyrna Airport Department of Public Safety, these are the firefighters for the airport, they were the first ones on the scene. We also want to thank the Smyrna Police Department, who acted so swiftly, but specifically, we need to thank Officer Ryan Baggett, Officer Jonathan Beverley, Sergeant Andrew Manning for representing the town of Smyrna in Pensacola, Florida, as that community gathered to remember Captain Kous. We also want to acknowledge the Smyrna Fire Department, Murphishville Police Department, Laverne Police Department, the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office, who provided 20 SROs to stand guard over the crash site from 6:00 PM Thursday until Monday morning, until they were relieved by the Tennessee Highway Patrol. We also want to acknowledge the Rutherford County EMS and Commissioner Pettis Reed, who among their many other responsibilities, were able to secure a generator for the Sam Davis Home Museum, so that no artifacts would be destroyed because they were without power. We also want to thank TIMA, the Tennessee Highway Patrol, TDEC, the Tennessee National Guard, American Red Cross, and the Sam Davis Home Board. We are all a family in mourning. As we continue to heal from this tragedy, we give our unwavering support to the Blue Angels and Captain Kous's family.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Stevens. I appreciate you doing this, and thank you, Commission, for allowing us a little bit of time here to share some of the highlights from a tragedy that we're proud of the way our community responded. Commissioner Allen touched on a lot of it, and Commissioner Stevens obviously is going to help honor Captain Kous's memory and his family with a resolution. You know, to say it was a tragedy is probably an understatement. Anytime you start seeing your hometown on national news, it kind of really wakes you up about how many people are impacted by this. You know, the Blue Angels are, they're a national treasure. I mean, there's tons of communities that have enjoyed air shows and seeing their performance, and, you know, it really hit home for us. There was, I was telling one of the news channels that was there that nine hours before that, I was in downtown Nashville, and they traditionally do a flyover on Thursday morning as they're coming into Smyrna, and I was standing there watching them fly over, and then nine hours later, we're there because one of them had crashed and passed away. And it was just one of those surreal feelings. It was one of those times that I can't remember how many times my text messages or telephone went off from people saying, "Is that really what happened? And where is it? And what do we need to do? And what are they doing for it?" And immediately after that, as most of you saw, and several of you were asking about this, we had a candlelight vigil that was at Lee Victory Park, and within about two hours of someone suggesting it, immediately, town manager Harry Gill went into action. The police were there to provide traffic flow and allow us to have a place where folks could come and just kind of gather and start the healing process. We had right around 1,000 people show up in about two hours, and we had to delay that candlelight vigil in prayer time because there were so many people trying to get in the park that we didn't want to start without them. So there's several ways now that the town of Smyrna is starting to do what they can to honor Captain Kous and his family and his memory. So if you'll just bear with me here for a second, and I've already told Commissioner Allen and Stevens to grab me if I forget something, but there's several different things that are going on. The first is Smyrna, town of Smyrna has actually established a committee that I think is going to be meeting at the end of the month. Is that correct, Commissioner Allen? To find a way to really honor Captain Kous and the Blue Angels in Smyrna with some sort of, you know, it could be, it's a memorial, there's several things that are probably going to be discussed, but some way that we can try to honor him. And the town of Smyrna and our individuals and citizens are encouraged to go on the website. There's an article on WGNS, and they can call the Smyrna Town Hall and gain some information on how they can contribute that. There's several email addresses listed, telephone numbers that they can reach out to, and again, that's not just for the town of Smyrna, we want anyone that wants to be a part of that to be able to be involved in that. But one of the neatest things that really shows you how folks can rally around a tragedy and something that oftentimes is one of the darker moments in a community, quickly lets light through, there was a GoFundMe page that was set up for Captain Kous and his family shortly after that tragedy, and as of, I think it was this afternoon, Commissioner Allen, correct me if I'm wrong, there was over $355,000 that have already been raised for Captain Kous's family. And I think that just shows you a little bit of the heart of the people, not only in the town of Smyrna, but those that were impacted by the Blue Angels and understand this. And I try to tell people, yes, Captain Kous was a hero, but he was a hero long before this accident. Anyone that served in our military and armed forces is a hero. It's just unfortunate sometimes it takes tragedies like this for us to recognize that and be able to publicly say that, and I apologize at the candlelight vigil to the veterans there, and I want to apologize publicly. We owe them more than just honoring them when there's a tragedy that happens. But this was a great way for us to be able to show support for those that couldn't come to those kind of events that are able to do that. And then one more quickly, if I can. The International Council of Airshows has also established a foundation to honor Captain Kous. Donors can contribute money to the Captain Jeff Kous Foundation, and there's a website, it's ICASFoundation.org. So it's the International Council of Airshows, ICASFoundation.org. You can also go out there and contribute. And then finally, just to wrap up before I give this back to Commissioner Stevens, there's going to be an Independence Day celebration, 4th of July celebration in the town of Smyrna on July 1, and what we're doing as a community is we're going to dedicate that to the Blue Angels and to Captain Kous, and the first 2,000 people in attendance will receive a memorial pen that's going to be in his honor and going to be in the Blue Angels' honor. So we encourage everybody to come out there. I know it's going to be a very popular event this year, it always is. Town of Smyrna always puts on a great show, we're always proud of what they do, but this year, I think it's going to put on, you know, it's going to have a little extra meaning behind it. And then also, at that time, the community will be able to donate to the Jeff Kous Memorial Fund, which is going to go towards a future memorial to honor him. So if there's any way that any individuals in your districts that you represent or you as commissioners would like to contribute, we will certainly honor that. Just get with us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. They all, and that's in Lowry.
In Lowry.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. I told her to grab me, and I'm glad she did. You can also go to First Bank on Lowry Street in Smyrna, and you can ask to be, to make a donation there under that name, and again, we thank you for your support and thank you for allowing us to come up here and allow us to honor someone that deserves it. I appreciate it.
So I'd like to present a resolution of honor for Captain Jeff Kous. Whereas it is with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the tragic death of Marine Captain Jeff Kous, and whereas Captain Kous was a native of Durango, Colorado, and whereas Captain Kous honorably served our country as a member of the United States Marine Corps, including a deployment abroad, and whereas in 2014, Captain Kous was selected for service in the distinguished military jet demonstration team known as the U.S. Navy Blue Angels, specifically flying plane number six, and whereas the Blue Angels were set to be a featured act at the Great Tennessee Airshow on June 4 and June 5, 2016, and whereas after what appears to have been a mechanical failure during a practice flight on the afternoon of June 2, Captain Kous's plane tragically crashed in a large field in Smyrna, Tennessee, and whereas instead of ejecting and allowing the plane to possibly cause injury or death to people in the vicinity, Captain Kous courageously stayed with his plane to ensure the public's safety, and whereas the heroic actions of Captain Kous were selfless, remarkable, much appreciated, and greatly admired by everyone in the community who continue to mourn this difficult loss, and whereas the people of Rutherford County, Tennessee, are indebted to the family of Captain Kous for his valiant actions, and whereas the people of Rutherford County, Tennessee, united together in so many ways to commemorate and grieve the passing of Captain Kous, and whereas it is only appropriate for the Board of Commissioners to pause and recognize the amazing life of Captain Jeff Kous and his lasting impact on the people of Rutherford County, Tennessee. Now therefore, be it resolved by the members of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that this legislative body hereby extends its deepest sympathy and condolences to the family and friends of Captain Kous. Be it further resolved that the clerk of this legislative body forward a copy of this resolution to the family of Captain Kous. Be it further resolved that the clerk of this legislative body forward a copy of this resolution to the Navy Flight Demonstration Squadron. Resolve this 16th day of June, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move for approval.
Second, Mr. Phillips, Allen, Turner, and others. Okay, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very, very much. Very well done. We appreciate this. Next, we have a time for public comments, and tonight, we've had two people that have requested to speak, and we'll remind you, just come forward, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes, and first is Carrie Nelson.
I'm Carrie Nelson. I'm a Sergeant, School Resource Officer Division. I want to begin by thanking everyone who truly knows what we do for standing behind us and being stirred up. My goal tonight is to clear misconceptions, myths, and falsehoods about our program, and specifically, the elementary positions. I cannot possibly cover it all in three minutes, so I will move fast. I have brought keepsakes to demonstrate points. The first is the mythical summers given off. Every SRO must work 280 hours after their shifts for compensatory time. I show you my tights and my tutu. These were worn on a Saturday 5K charity run to support books from birth, put on by the club that I sponsor at Stewart Creek Elementary. My kids were promised when I had 250 people sign up for the race, this is how I would run it. This is how I earn my time. The club has 80 to 100 students, which participate two times a week after school at no cost. Next is the misconception that the elementary officer isn't as busy as a middle or high school officer. This is our curriculum manual, and it are 60 different classes that we teach three to eight different times per year, depending on the school size. It is anchored by our six core values that include kindness, drug-free lives, and diversity. Now for the most insulting. It is the belief that by some, that you may not be getting the value that is expected from a full-time employee. This is the hair dye and the fingernail polish that I wore to reward my students when they brought in five or 5,000 food items during the annual SRO food drive. My answer to this belief is to urge any commissioner who wonders whether I work or not, is to leave your chairs and help me move the 5,200 cans from the classroom to the loading dock after school after your work hours. These are awards that I received from the PTO in Rutherford County, ones for safety from the county, with my faculty nominating me because of safety drills, self-defense classes, and crisis training. The PTO was to thank me for the support I've provided. I'm still washing slime out of my hair and my clothes from 182 children getting to slime me. These are the case files from two sexual offenders that were registered that came to my school during the school day, one convicted of a rape, attempted rape of boys ages six to nine. Fortunately, both days, I was assigned to that school at that time. I would like to tell you, these items make me special. They do not. They make me typical of the officers that serve your children every day. Some have questioned who supervises the SROs. Our seven sergeants supervise 46 officers and 70 part-time crossing guards. These are their time sheets, and these are their activity logs. You do not want to know the actual number of hours each officer works. In times when law enforcement is concerned about constant attacks, having to worry about the annual dance of our SROs valuable and should we keep them becomes tiresome. When the SRO's pay grade has been left behind for five straight years, and we lose good people for more money in transport and civil divisions, it becomes tiresome. I hope this has cleared up some questions about what we do and how our division functions. Again, those who have supported our work, I thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Phil Boykin.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for giving me this time. Appreciate it. I'm a resident of Rutherford County for about 30 years, citizen, taxpayer. Current address is Rock Vale, right off Windrow Road. I've been there for about 24 years. And as my grandfather used to say, times change, and they do, and the more people you get to come into any area, problems seem to follow, because nobody thinks just alike. And the issue that, I know this might be a little touchy with people, and I'm as patriotic as anybody, my dad served in World War II as a CB, two Purple Hearts, and I've got numerous family members that served, and I think the Fourth is a special holiday. But fireworks, evidently, common sense is going out the window with a lot of parents when they teach their kids safety and fireworks and a proper time to shoot fireworks. And the past few years, in our neighborhood, it's getting worse and worse, and we've had to have some cars repainted because of bottle rockets falling on the paint, and we've got little dogs, and one's a three-pound Yorkie, and we have to keep that dog sheltered inside for about two weeks because it's not enough to celebrate on the Fourth or the day before or the day after. And those pets mean a lot to us, as I'm sure you folks have pets that mean a lot to you, and we hate to see them scared to death like that. But I'm all for celebrating the Fourth, celebrating New Years, and kids need to have a little enjoyment, and adults too. But according to my Commissioner Mike here, he has informed me, and I did a little investigating too, there's really no ordinance for restrictions on fireworks in the county. Now, there is in the city, because I was on the phone with police force today, and I was informed that, you know, they do have controls on that. Well, my question is, if it's good enough for the city, why isn't it good enough for us folks in the county? And like I said, kids can have their fun, you know, a day before the Fourth, a day after, but we've had to put up with, not just, as I was growing up, I never had anything more than a Roman candle or a firecracker, but they've got these huge cannons, and they jar our windows, and they rain down on our house, and we're worried about it catching on fire. We've got good insurance, but we don't want our house to catch on fire and destroy everything we've worked for all our life. It's just common sense, and we've been kept awake on New Years more than once, 2:00 and 3:00 AM, several times, and on the Fourth, 2:00 or 3:00 AM. That's just not right. I've got rights too, my family does, and it's not just me. In our community, I've talked to several others, and they're getting quite upset that it can't be celebrated in a way with common sense and decency, and really think it's about time for some ordinances for the no-ways, and, you know, if you start shooting them off around 10 o'clock in the morning, and you shoot them off till 10, 10:30 at night on New Year, or the Fourth, New Year's maybe go a little longer, go till 12:30 or 1:00, okay? But not 3:00. And I wish you'd visit this and see if you could come up with that. And then there's another issue that, maybe for another time, but in our neighborhood, and we've got two and a half acres, and there's five acre tracts too, I heard 500 rounds of gunfire one day, five, at least 500 rounds, and I heard a bullet whizz through the trees. You might want to visit, if you've got a farm, it's one thing to shoot a gun off, and I've had shotgun pellets fall on our roof before. But if you're in a subdivision, even if you're in the county, do you really want that much gunfire going off around you and children and pets? I don't think so. Thank you for your time.
Right, thank you. Let's see. Commissioner Turner, I believe in four minutes, you can take care of elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, on your iPad, you'll find a list of notaries that need our approval, and Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Motion second, Commissioner Jernigan. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Sereno, I'm sorry.
My name is Officer Michael Sereno.
Okay, so let the record reflect that Mr. Sereno has asked to be noted that he abstained. Thank you.
Steering would also like to fill two vacancies on the Lineball Library Board. Steering nominates Lisa Trail and Kathy Campbell. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And a second from Commissioner Gooch. Any discussion? All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Steering would also like to fill two vacancies on the Community Care Board. Steering nominates Mr. Mike Nunley and Frankie Johnson. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook and Mr. Johnson. Any questions or discussion? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Steering would like to also announce a vacancy on the Industrial Development Board and Health and Education Facilities Board to fill the unexpired term of Randall Matlock. The term will expire on August of 2021. Steering would like to announce a vacancy on the Stone River Regional Library Board, and Steering would like to announce two vacancies on the Insurance Committee. Mr. Chairman, that's our report.
Right, thank you, sir. Well, you were so efficient. Commissioner Phillips, on the resolution to approve the consent agenda, a couple of minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Those of you that looked at your agenda, there's 18 items on there. It was kind of confusing to me to try to review all those things, but I did find most of them to be things of a normal nature that we approve by voice vote most every year, and with that said, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I have a second, Commissioner Jordan. Did anyone have any items that they in specific would like to be removed from that agenda? If not, then please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes. Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, there's no unfinished business. And now, Mr. Demossi, we're ready for the public hearings. We have two of those tonight. The first one is an amendment to Section 1405 H1 of the Rutherford County Zoning Ordinance Regarding Quorum and Voting Procedures for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And this applicant is the planning staff. Mr. Demossi.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. Just have two public hearings for you tonight. The first deals with an amendment to Section 1405 H1, which regards the quorum and voting procedures for our Board of Zoning Appeals. The Tennessee State Legislature passed an amendment to the state law that concerns the makeup of county boards of zoning appeals. I did present a copy of that amendment in your agenda packets for your reference and review. Prior to the amendment, counties were allowed to appoint BZAs of either three or five members. There's other provisions for different types of charter governments and whatnot, I won't go into all that. But Rutherford County continues to be one of the fastest-growing counties in Tennessee. With the adoption of our current zoning ordinance, we placed additional responsibility on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Also, the complexity of those applications has increased as well. Our BZA currently has five regular members and two alternates. As a result of that state law change, we can appoint boards of zoning appeals with five, well, three, five, seven, or nine members. Our alternates typically do attend our meetings, but only participate vote if one of the regular members is absent. After discussions with Mayor Burgess, staff is of the opinion that it would be appropriate to change our current makeup of the Board of Zoning Appeals to seven regular members without any alternates. The county commission agreed and passed a resolution expanding our Board of Zoning Appeals to seven members at their May 12, 2016, meeting, which will become effective October 1 of this year. With this change in membership, it does become necessary for us to make just a small amendment to our zoning ordinance regarding the makeup and the quorum procedures for our Board of Zoning Appeals. You'll see the current language is really specific to three members, whereas the proposed language is more, I guess, general, generic. That way, if the membership numbers were to ever change in the future, we wouldn't have to change it again. This would work for pretty much any number that we were allowed to change it to. So with that, the Planning Commission did have a public hearing on this and does recommend approval by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Demossi regarding this amendment to the zoning resolution? If not, we need a motion. Mr. Phillips, a motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm a little bit ahead of myself here. You know, I'm anxious to keep moving here. All right, sorry about that. Thank you for the heads up on catch one. Okay, so we will declare the public hearing open with respect to this amendment to Section 1405 H- the public hearing open with respect to this amendment to Section 1405 H1 of the Rutherford County Zoning Ordinance. So those of you that are here that wish to speak for or against this amendment, please come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments, please. Does anyone wish to speak? All right, I don't see anyone coming forward, therefore the public hearing is closed. Now, we're in order to take a motion concerning this amendment. Commissioner Phillips, motion to approve. Commissioner Phillips, a second from Commissioner Cook. Any questions or discussions? All right, all of you in favor of this, then please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, we have amendment to Section 1408, D2, point F of the Rutherford County Zoning Ordinance regarding the removable, removal of automobile vehicle repair from the prohibited activities list for major home-based businesses. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. Staff recently was approached by a county resident who had been approved back in 2005 for a conditional use permit under our old zoning resolution to run a car repair business out of his home. This business was commenced, but discontinued soon afterwards, and since that point, his conditional use permit has expired. Of course, since that time, the county has also adopted new zoning regulations that do not allow automobile or vehicle repair businesses as a home-based business. This resident did inquire about the steps that might be necessary should he want to reestablish his business, which he did. Since the conditional use permit had expired, staff explained that the only way to commence this business again would be to actually rezone the property to a designation that would allow it, some sort of a commercial designation. Just as a way of background, the zoning ordinance categorizes home-based businesses in two categories, minor and major. Minor home-based businesses are something that staff can approve administratively. Home, major, excuse me, home-based businesses require what's called a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals. There are certain uses that are not allowed as either a major or a minor home-based business or both. Automobile vehicle repair does fall into the category of prohibited on both lists. We included what I would call a cheat sheet of the regulations in your agenda packets, and you can find those on your iPads as well. After discussing it with the resident that had called about this, I essentially told them at that point, I said, "Look, I can at least talk to the Planning Commission to see if this is something they'd be interested in possibly making an amendment to, maybe they allowing them as a major home-based business, but not a minor." So staff did approach the Planning Commission about this possibility. Overall, the Commission appeared to be in favor of the amendment. The Commission did feel that while an automobile vehicle repair business may not be appropriate in a single-family subdivision, a property owner on a larger, more rural tract may be able to operate in such a manner as to not disturb their neighbors. Eliminating this requirement from the prohibited list for a major home-based business would allow the Board of Zoning Appeals to decide if the use is appropriate for the area requested. The proposed amendment would simply eliminate automobile vehicle repair from the prohibited list of major home-based businesses. It would still remain on the minor home-based business, which means somebody couldn't just start doing a minor home-based business administratively. We could not approve that administratively, and that's not something I think would be appropriate. So the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this item, and they did recommend approval, again, by a unanimous vote. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi? Mr. P. Excuse me, Mr. Where, go ahead. He rose, all right, you go first, sir.
Thank you, thanks, Commissioner P. as well. What's the minimum zoning that allows
Automotive repair is classified under our Commercial Activities tab, under Automotive Repair and Servicing. It's allowed by special exception in the Commercial Neighborhood Zone, which is our most restrictive of the commercial zones. It's allowed by right in the Commercial Services, Commercial General, and then in the two industrial zones, and then also by special exception in the Employment Activity Center.
So prior to this, precedents were about to set, rezoning would have been required to do automotive shop.
Based on the new ordinance, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Had he continued his business, would his conditional use permit have continued as well?
If he had continued his business and not stopped operation, he would have been considered a grandfather not conforming use.
Other CUPs that have automotive repair will continue to exist, as long as they stay active.
Yes, yes, yes. The ones that were active and were legally approved prior to the new ordinance taking effect in 2013 would be allowed to continue even if this particular amendment is passed.
If the property sells?
It goes with the property, unless it's conditioned otherwise. There's some conditional use permits that were conditioned to expire upon sale or transfer.
Under the home-based business, the major home-based business, if it's an auto repair and it sells, tell me again.
Yeah, yes, sir. The Board of Zoning Appeals could condition it expiring upon sale or transfer of the property as well.
Would it expire by default? Could the next person purchase the property and just continue a shop with no communication with the county?
Think of all the quick answers, no. If the Board of Zoning Appeals actually puts a provision or a condition on there that says this is going to expire upon sale or transfer of the property, then if they sell the property and someone comes and buys the property and starts operating, they would be in violation at that point. They would have to come back and go through the process, just like the original owner did.
I voted no on this in the committee level, and I'm still not real clear on why we're going the direction towards allowing what could be an intrusive activity in a residential zone, despite it being rural and over two acres. I understand the home business issues. So I just wanted to state that publicly and then clarify a couple of questions. So thank you.
Commissioner P.
A couple of quick questions. Hopefully, does the repair zoning or does the repair cover paint and grinding?
Pretty much any type of repair work, really, is what we'd be looking at, yes, sir.
I think it was only mechanical. I mean, I'm in favor of these people that have been doing this for a number of years to have that grandfathered. But I'm also in favor of, you know, if they leave it for it to lapse and go back to residential the way it originally was. I noticed you got a nine to zero vote out of this. I mean, what was the feeling for most of the committee members? I don't see it myself.
From the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, obviously, there's four of them here. I don't want to speak for them to put words in their mouth. But I think there was a general consensus with the Planning Commission, and those who were attendance can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, that thought, of course, they didn't want to see it as a by right type situation where somebody could just come in and say, "Okay, this is what I want to do," and I could sign off on it. They were more comfortable with the Board of Zoning Appeal taking it on a case-by-case basis, especially in on larger tracts and with folks that may be able to do it in such a way that they weren't going to really cause any consternation amongst their neighbors. They just felt that giving them an opportunity to do that type of business on their property, they felt more comfortable with that. But again, they can certainly elaborate more on that.
Well, you answered part of it there. When you said larger acreage, I mean, you're not talking about in a subdivision.
Right. Well, and if this is a pass, it's not that somebody couldn't ask to do that. But the Board of Zoning Appeals at that point would be able to look at it and say, "Okay, you've got a half acre or quarter of an acre, and you're completely surrounded by homes. Maybe that's not appropriate right there." But if somebody comes in, you know, in another area and has five, six acres, they might find that more appropriate.
I see. So you're basically giving them, got to go through the BZA.
Correct, right, yes.
Also go through, or does it only go through the BZA?
Yes, sir, it would only go through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you.
If I could clarify just a little bit, this is a constituent in my district. His address used to be Kimbo Road, but when Veterans Parkway came through, he now is, he sits on Veterans. It is not a subdivision. He owns multiple acres. He's got a really nice detached garage away and in back of the house from his original business on the same location, just different address now. He doesn't paint, he doesn't do bodywork, he just does mechanical engine-type work. And he does this as part of his income. He doesn't, the way his property sits in his garage is, he only can work on one, maybe two cars at a time. So there's, this is one of those gray areas in the zoning that, you know, we're always concerned about all of a sudden a giant parking lot or a junkyard associated with something like this. But in this particular instance, it's just not the case. It's a onesie-twosie kind of deal when it's out, and it's very unobtrusive. He's had no complaints from the neighbors. And he would be certainly fine with, upon sale of property, that zoning dies with that property. But we're just, we're trying to resurrect something that he was able to do before it lapsed. And now that he fronts Veterans, which is in that, in my part of the world, that's a major commercial, going to be a major commercial thoroughfare, this was one of those little gray areas that we thought we could open up for discussion. Hope that cleared some stuff up.
All right. Any more questions of Mr. Demossi then? All right, then, we will declare the public hearing available for those that wish to speak for or against this proposed amendment. Now's your opportunity to come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments, please. Does anyone wish to speak regarding this proposed amendment? All right, there's no one coming forward, therefore the public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Motion from Commissioner Kusch. Is there a second? Commissioner Phillips, further discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Piercey.
Not that I'm against Mr. Kusch's person in his district, but why was this brought out to be changed for everybody and something not worked out for the man in it?
Commissioner Piercey, I'm not sure there really was a way to work this out in such a way that it could have just applied to his district. The only thing he really could have done would have been to rezone the property. And I didn't personally think that that was probably the best course of action. So we just brought this before the Planning Commission for their consideration. Again, I just don't think there was really, that I think is the only way it could have been worked out, was if he actually rezoned the property.
Couldn't have got a conditional use permit or anything?
Well, we don't do conditional use permits by name anymore. We do special exceptions, and, which is basically the same thing, by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And under our current rules and regulations, that type of business is not allowed to be done as a home-based business. So I didn't see any other way to do this.
So in the future, we're depending on the old government to take care of it, if it's a small, small asset?
Well, in a sense, yes. Now, I will say this, that, you know, before people make application to either the Board of Zoning Appeals or for zoning applications, they always have meetings with staff, and we always have conversations. And there are a number of applications that will never come before you or never come before the Board of Zoning Appeals, because after discussion, we just essentially tell them that we don't feel that this is something that is appropriate. We don't feel that this is something staff can recommend or staff can support. So after hearing that, some applicants decide not to apply. So you have staff to rely on, at least to a certain extent. But the Board of Zoning Appeals or the Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners' role as well. Now, if somebody really wants to apply, regardless of whether or not we feel it's appropriate or not, they can certainly do that. I mean, it's their prerogative, it's their time and their money. But I'm always as upfront with applicants as I can be about any application that comes in, about whether I think it's an appropriate application or not. But, I mean, ultimately, it's either the Board of Zoning Appeals' decision for something like this, or if it's a rezoning application, it's really up to this board.
I have another question, or I want a clarification. So if I understand it right, we had a, one option would have been to rezone commercial, which would have opened it up to all kinds of possibilities.
Yes, sir.
Anything that's applicable under the commercial zoning, or we can amend this ordinance or this rule section, and then leave it to the Board of Zoning Appeals and codes to make sure that no inappropriate use is, takes place on, for example, someone who has a half-acre lot, and people either saw it as opposed to, say, "I wanted to open something in my garage," which is on a five-and-a-half-acre lot, and no one for 300 or 400 feet in any direction. So we'll leave it to BZA to determine that, and then codes to enforce it.
Yes, sir, that is correct. And I will say, the home-based business regulations that were under, they weren't a new creation when we adopted the new zoning ordinance. They'd actually been amended a few years prior to that, and we essentially kind of took what was already done and brought it over to the existing, or to the new code, because we liked the way they were functioning. When we were doing the research for that, we saw some codes that had lists similar to what we do, prohibited uses. We saw some that did not have lists like that. They pretty much just said, you know, "If you want this particular use, you go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and ask for it." So there weren't prohibited lists. We went with the prohibited list because that was what we were most comfortable with. But it can be done either way. So I just wanted you to know that, that there are other ordinances out there that don't even have a prohibited list.
Mr. P.
One thing else that occurred to me, and part of it had to do with that public comment about not being a noise ordinance in the county. There is a noise ordinance in the county. And one of my concerns about this is noise level, of course, paint was the other one. But the guys that are not in a established subdivision yet or are in the rural area and subject to, they're not subject to the noise ordinance, since they're not in an established subdivision. However, if you are, you would be, can you attach something to this, or do you think it would be pertinent to attach something to make them adhere to the same noise ordinance if you were in an established subdivision? I think that would go a long way toward easing me as far as them, you know, being annoyance to the communities.
I think it's something that you could add on as a condition per application of some of these. I don't think we're going to see just a mad rush of these type of businesses making application. But I think that's something of staff that we could be cognizant of. I don't think that's something you could necessarily do tonight, since all we're proposing tonight is to delete a line. I don't think you could amend in adding something in without sending it back to the Planning Commission. But I do think that's an appropriate condition on a special exception if this is approved on a case-by-case basis at that point.
I'd feel real good if y'all brought it back after hearing that comment to let us talk about noise ordinance being added to anybody outside of a large subdivision that wants to do this type of.
Now, I will say, and let me, actually, now that I think about it, let me, let me open my code, and let me quote you a part of it.
Mr. Demossi, your home-based business has a noise comment.
Right, that's what I was about to say. And let me read this to you.
No noise can extend past the property line according to the verbiage in the regulation. So they do have some coverage over noise.
Yeah, let me just, here we go. Let's see, too many pages. That must be in Chapter 11. Just bear with me a second. The way we've got this structured, we have part of it in Chapter 11, part of it in Chapter 14. And I think it's a, yeah, here we go. Let's see. Okay, yeah, under requirements for home-based business, now, this is the requirement for any home-based, be it administrative or those that have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. It says, "The equipment used by the home-based business and the generation of the home, operation, excuse me, of the home-based business shall not create any vibrations, heat, glare, dust, odors, noise, or smoke discernible at the property lines." So that's already a requirement that's in there, Commissioner P. So I think that takes care of what your concern was.
All right, is there any other discussion? Commissioner Kaplan.
The one, the main thought I had was about roll-offs coming in and out of the property.
About what, I'm sorry?
Roll-offs, automobile roll-offs. If I'm a neighbor, you know, and I've got these roll-offs coming in and out with vehicles, would that fall under number six, is my first question. Delivery vehicles used to deliver goods to home-based businesses are limited to passenger vehicles, mail carriers, and express carriers such as, but not limited to UPS, FedEx, or DHL. I think it's important to note that I don't think roll-offs should be allowed to be coming in and out of these driveways. And my second concern is, I don't think it should roll to the next property owner. A sales contract, the property is marketed, a sales contract goes in place, they go to a closing. There needs to be an element in place where it just doesn't grandfather over to the very next owner, in my opinion. If that's changed, I'd be willing to support it.
Commissioner Jordan.
Well, I supported this in planning because I was a big fan of the conditional use permit. I don't think we ought to be out in the county rezoning everything every time somebody comes along. I've not been a fan 100% of the new zoning ordinance, which is, in most cases, it's good, but I disagree with some of it. If somebody's out in a rural area, they've got 5, 10, 50 acres, and they want to have a little shop there for this, this was prohibited. And the way this is now, they can at least get a hearing on it. Like it or not, we've given a lot of authority to BZA with this new zoning ordinance. And they're doing a great they're doing a great job. We just finished helping ratify, getting seven full-time members, and we need to support them, but, but I think this is a good idea to do this, instead of rezoning every piece of property that comes along, that has an argument behind it, because it's zoned in perpetuity, for the most part. And we've got a piece of property out there on Trimble Road, or wherever, Versales Road and all, that's in a residential area, and all of a sudden, it's got a commercial zoning from now on, and a lot of these businesses are just somebody trying to get up and started, get their feet on the ground, and then, when they get up to some size, they move into more commercial areas. So, I support this, because once that person is outgrowing their home, their home no longer is owned commercial and stuff, and I think we ought to support the BZA, and let them have the, you know, let them make these decisions, that we've got a good BZA, and they do a good job. So, I, I think this is a step in the right direction, personally.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Phillips, and then Commissioner Reed.
Just, just one follow-up to what Will has said. We have given the BZA a lot of authority in the last couple of years, and the reason for that is to give us some flexibility as a county to do certain things for certain requests. And this particular individual has a one-man shop. All of his work will be done inside, and it's, that business has been there for a long, long time. He let it lapse, but he wants to start it back up again. What better use of that guy's property could it possibly be? The BZA will give that particular individual consideration to open up that business, and can put all kinds of restrictions on it. Nothing outside, no noise, they can do all of that, the BZA can't, if they do their job, and I'm confident that they will. So, this gives us a little bit of flexibility, and gives a, a small business owner an opportunity to work out of his own property. It doesn't mean a subdivision, I don't think any of us would allow that, but, but just think, in a subdivision, a third of an acre, if someone built a detached garage and started building dragsters or race cars in there, there's nothing you can do about it. It's his property, and he doesn't put it out for rent, or he doesn't sell anything to anybody, and that could be far worse than what we're talking about here. Just one or two cars, and that's what we're talking about. And I think the BZA will do its job. I'm not really in favor of taking a, a residential piece of property and rezoning it commercial, that five years, that little business may not be there, but it's owned commercial, and some business that none of us want could go in there. So, we just think, the, the Planning Commissioners thought that it would give us, as a county, a little bit more flexibility that we don't have right now, to allow a home-based business. And it's a small business, not a large enterprise, not a tire-changing business, but a small business, and, and we trust the BGA will do its due diligence, and will make the right decision, and put the proper restrictions with input from the public.
Mr. Reed.
We currently have those individuals now that are possibly doing this already without any type of zoning, or without any type of permission, and I'm sure our zoning department probably gets calls from neighbors at different times. I can see where this will give us an opportunity, that when those calls come in, they can go out there and check on these, and this will give us a direction where we might have an answer to some of this, where we will have a capability of maybe working with this, and straightening some of this out, and give us a, a chance to clean up some of what we have out there, as well as give these individuals a chance to, to do it correctly. So, this could be a, a tool that we'll have in our toolbox to make it work right.
Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel like we're really starting to chase our tail around and round here, so I would like to call for the question.
Have a second on the call for the question? We do have a second? All right, all of you in favor of the call for the question, please say aye. Opposed? I believe that was, well, it was unanimous, so I don't have to worry about it being two-thirds. All right, we're ready for a vote then. Okay, since we've had a bit of discussion, let's take a roll call vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes, please.
Twenty ayes, one no, motion passes.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Demossi. Reports by standing committees. Commissioner Jordan, Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
General Fund Budget Amendments Resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Human resources, increased expenditures, evaluation and testing, $10,500, and decreased unassigned fund balance, $10,500. Other administration of justice, probation, increased expenditures, contracted private agencies, $42,000, decreased expenditures, employee insurance, $19,000, and decreased unassigned fund balance, $23,000. Medical examiner, increased expenditures, other contracted services, $35,000, and decreased unassigned fund balance, $35,000. That's for autopsies, the last one is. Resolved this 16th day of June 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Jordan, and then P. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one ayes, motion passes.
Item L1B. Memorandum of Understanding with City of Murfreesboro for Solid Waste Strategic Plan. Resolution, whereas the Middle Point landfill is projected to close in eight years, and whereas the City of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County see the need to plan for future needs for garbage collection and disposal, to keep pace with the rapid population growth in the county, and whereas the entities desire to partner in the planning of these needs, enter into a memorandum of understanding for a solid waste strategic plan. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor, and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute a memorandum of understanding with the City of Murfreesboro, a copy of the same being attached here to as Exhibit 1, and incorporate a hearing by reference as if set forth hearing at length verbatim, relative to the strategic, solid waste strategic plan. Resolved this 16th day of June 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, who is that? Commissioner Dodd? All right, thank you, sir. Any questions?
And the memorandum of understanding is available, if anybody wants some good nighttime reading, it's right there for you to entertain yourself with.
All right. All of you in favor of this, then please say aye. Excuse me, Mr. Schaefer, you are rising.
Just a question. Any other government entities in the county, have they been approached yet about if they want to take part in this?
They have, they have been invited, and they are aware of us doing this, and they so can come forward.
Thank you.
All right. There's really no money attached here yet, but we will spend some money, and that will come through an amendment in the future. All of you in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Now, there's not a report from the Health and Education Committee, or the Property Management Committee, or the Public Safety Committee, or our Public Works and Planning Committee. So, we're ready for the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, and we have three agenda items there. First, we're gonna let our county attorney just sort of set the stage and give you some background of why we're doing what we're doing here tonight. So, Mr. Cope, would you please make some comments, and then we'll go into the first resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. With the action of the Steering Committee the other night to bring forward to the full commission matters relating to our county sheriff, including resolutions that are before you tonight, the county mayor met with our office, and to discuss how that would best be accomplished, and in particular, these two matters that are before the commission tonight, one being to potentially request the sheriff to resign, or alternatively, for the county to consider in some form or another, a potential ouster action. As many of you all are aware, last year, many months ago, there was an ethics complaint filed against the sheriff, and at that time, the Ethics Committee was convened to investigate and/or make a finding with respect to that. And at that point in time, our offices, as county attorneys, reported to the chairman of that Ethics Committee, Mr. Beatty, that we potentially would have a conflict of interest in advising that committee, the Ethics Committee, concerning any action that might be taken by the Ethics Committee. And that conflict arises solely, at this point in time, by virtue of the fact that our office, as you know by contract, represents all county officials. That includes the sheriff, it includes the trustee, it includes the property assessor, it includes department heads. Our contract is very broad-based to provide representation. And in doing so, we are frequently employed by the Sheriff's Department to provide representation to its officials, including the sheriff. And we presently have, as we did this time a year ago, a number of lawsuits in which the sheriff is named, and we are presently defending the sheriff with respect to certain actions that he took or didn't take, as alleged in those matters. As a result of that, we, of course, advised the Ethics Committee then a year ago, that under the Board of Professional Responsibility Rules for Attorneys in the State of Tennessee, it's deemed inappropriate to, on the one hand, be representing an individual, and on the other hand, turning around and particularly recommending or giving advice, potentially against that individual. As, as the Bible might've said, one cannot serve two masters. You can't put one head on and say, well, on this day, I'm going to give advice favorable to an individual, but on the next day, I may give advice contrary to the individual, when you have a professional relationship with that individual, as we do in representing the sheriff and his department. So, with that in mind, the mayor met with our offices, and we have before you tonight a resolution to consider, for your benefit, the employment of an attorney, an outside attorney, who has no conflicts of interest potentially with our Rutherford County sheriff, and that's Mr. John T. Bobo, who serves in the capacity of the Bedford County Attorney. Previously, Mr. Bobo was employed by the county to assist in the ethics matter, and so he has some considerable background by virtue of having had that prior experience in understanding exactly what the county is dealing with presently. So, it was determined that it would be appropriate to allow you all to have the benefit, if need be, in executive session, or otherwise, to confer with an attorney who could give impartial, fair, and independent advice, without anyone claiming that the present county attorney's office was some way conflicted by virtue of our representation of the sheriff in these other matters. These are indeed important matters, and you are, you are deserving of the best professional independent advice you can give, without there being any questioned, as to there being any bias, or motive, or other thought process involved. So, with that in mind, Mr. Mayor, unless there are questions, I think it would be appropriate for Steering to bring forward then, the resolution for the commission to consider utilizing Mr. Bobo to provide advice and assistance in this matter.
All right. Commissioner Kooch, will you then please come forward? And if you'll, I'm sure you've all read this resolution, but this is a very narrowly crafted resolution. You are being asked to repoint, Mr. Bobo, for this purpose of just this discussion that will appear here in executive question. So, it's narrowly drawn, and past that discussion, there is nothing here contained. So, Mr. Kooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The resolution reads as follows. Whereas a federal indictment was issued against Sheriff Robert Arnold, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners has requested and needs legal representation to advise on appropriate actions, if any, to be taken with respect to ouster of Sheriff Robert Arnold, and other such matters relating thereto, and whereas Attorney John T. Bobo and the law firm of Bobo Hunt White &amp; Nance have preliminary consented to represent the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners in Rutherford County, and whereas Attorney John T. Bobo has served as county attorney for Bedford County, as outside legal counsel for more than 20 years, and has previously provided legal counsel to the Rutherford County Ethics Committee with respects to ethics complaint filed against Sheriff Robert Arnold, and whereas John T. Bobo and his firm have likewise represented Giles County, Marshall County, and Moore County in various county matters. Now, therefore, be it resolved that upon recommendation of the county mayor, with the advice, approval, and consent of the county attorney, Attorney John T. Bobo and the law firm of Bobo Hunt White &amp; Nance be authorized to represent the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners in Rutherford County, for the purpose of advising the Board of Commissioners as to appropriate action, if any, to be taken with respect to a request of resignation and/or ouster of Sheriff Arnold, and such other matters relating thereto. Be it further resolved, Attorney John T. Bobo and his law firm will advise, as provided hearing, in such legal work, the attorneys performed for and on behalf of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners shall be paid at the present hourly rate of the Rutherford County Attorney, and this is resolved the 16th day of June 2016. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Kooch. All right, questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir. How much is this gonna cost? How much are we prepared to spend for this?
Well, right now, Mr. Bobo's cost will essentially be whatever his, the hourly rate is, that, and that's all we're going to be responsible for. Now, this is, this, we're not talking about going to court, we're talking about using him to give you commissioners advice.
I understand, but haven't we already received enough information from the district attorney and other people involved, that it's not the prudent thing to do, to approach an ouster suit, or anything of that nature?
Well, I think, I think that's what you need to decide during this executive session, so you can all be fully and properly informed, then you can, from that point, you can make the proper decision. I don't think we should discuss that in a public forum yet.
But you don't have any idea of what kind of money you'd be spending, a certain amount of hours that's gonna be involved in this, or anything of that nature?
The only money we're talking about involving right now is the hour or two here that you discussed this, and after that, you'll have to decide if there's any further a need for an additional outside attorney to counsel us. Other questions?
Does this limit us to not talking about any other ethical complaints that might be out there?
Sir, what's that?
Does this resolution limit us to not being able to talk about any other ethical complaints that might be out there during this executive session?
Yes, it does. It's very narrowly drawn, and I'll let Mr. Cope address that, but it only has two specific things that are to be discussed here.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. This relates to the sheriff, and it has to be related, if you're going into executive session, it has to be a pending controversy that might result in litigation. And if, if you don't have pending litigation, potentially, which Resolution out of Steering Committee said there would be a potential for consideration of an ouster. So, you can't discuss anything other than would relate to pending litigation, which would be, in this case, whether the commission would want to consider any further litigation as to the sheriff.
Or to the, a request of resignation, either one of those two, which was another recommendation that came forward from the Steering Committee. Okay, there's no other questions, then. All of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, that being said, we're ready for an executive session. Mr. Bobo is with us. Everyone that's in the audience here, all press, everyone except our attorneys and our commissioners must be excused. So, we'll be going off the air, and we'll give just a few moments for the room to be evacuated, and then we will start this discussion. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in session. We have been in, in an executive session with our county attorney, Mr. John Bobo, discussing a request for resignation and ouster lawsuit, and Mr. Bobo will give us a, a report on those discussions.
One of the specifics that was in the engagement was my recommendation in terms One of the specifics that was in the engagement was my recommendation in terms of a resignation. I see no reason at all that you would not request an immediate resignation from the sheriff, and you can take the appropriate action to do that, and that, that would be my recommendation. As to the other, I'm happy to accept the engagement to review all the facts with various prosecuting attorneys, because we've got both a state and federal level, and to look very closely at the civil law on ouster, and, uh, once we're able to gather sufficient facts and do a little bit more in-depth research as to the ouster statute, I'll report back to you at the appropriate time, and if, in the event that, that there is some breaking news or some reason that you need me sooner than that's completed, you can have the mayor's office contact me, and I'll make myself available for any meeting that you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bobo. All right, Commissioner Gooch, let's continue with the Steering Report, and you have a resolution to request the resignation of the sheriff next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas a federal indictment was issued against Sheriff Robert Arnold, and whereas the Steering Committee of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners forward a request to the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that a resolution be passed requesting Sheriff Robert Arnold to resign his office as sheriff of Rutherford County, now therefore be it resolved that upon recommendation of the Steering Committee, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners hereby request Sheriff, Sheriff Robert Arnold to resign his office as sheriff of Rutherford County, Tennessee, effective immediately. Resolved this the 16th day of June 2016. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, from Mr. Jordan, Schaefer, and many others. All right, any discussion? Mr. Schaefer?
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, that's already been requested, and I so was planning to do that. No other discussion, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please ca, uh, record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Gooch. Is there any other business to come before this body? All right, if there's no other business to come before this body, we are adjourned until the next meeting regarding our budget approval. Thank you.